Good morning, everyone out there. I will call the commission meeting. Your board of secretaries, please call the room.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Dactin.
Present.
Resign Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. If you all join me with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Great way to start out this beautiful, hot day. All right, so we have a full agenda today. Appreciate everyone being here. We are live on YouTube and it can be seen after we go off live today. So we have to approve today's agenda. We need, we have no minutes to approve and no financials to approve. That's pretty unusual. So we're all caught up. Good job, Ms. Maddie. And we also need to approve the consent agenda as printed. We will follow exactly the format that we have on the agenda. So we'll keep it in sequence. And I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
If you got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so first up today is our circuit clerk, Ms. Stellings. Proposed 26 budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I don't know why I haven't thought about this. I do love that we still do the pledge. It just makes me thankful every time.
Yeah.
I know you guys kind of briefly went over the one part for the pre-trial services with Judge Johnson. So I did want to follow up with that. She wanted it to be increased to 120. And she said, "We've experienced an increase in crimes that require GPS monitoring, but we will work on trying to reduce the length of time defendants are on GPS in 2026." So, because I had actually first told her I thought 130,000 based on how much we'd done thus far. So she's wanting to hopefully stay 120,000 and then try to do more work on it next year.
Okay.
It's always kind of a weird category because I don't, I'm not in control of it, but it's in my budget. It's always, it's always an odd one. So I did have a hundred changes. I, like, that one was one. I upped the jury expense by like 5,000 just because it looks like our average, we might end the year around 54,000. It's one of the most frustrating categories because so many times we send out jury summons or you are paying for postage in the mailing. And then that Friday or maybe the week before, and some Sundays, a jury goes away. So then, of course, we let the jurors know as much as possible. And it's just always been, Judge Orr used to tell Cindy that it was like you prepared for a play and practiced and everything, and then the play got canceled. So that's why it's always kind of an odd amount just with the two circuit judges. And then once in a great while, an associate judge may have a jury. They do schedule a lot, the associate judges, but then they end up pleading or continuing. Kind of depends on the case. So that's the only reason I thought I should maybe include that. Because you can see in 2024, which is the third column, we only spent 38,000 last year. But it really, truly just depends on how many juries we have go. And I told you about the pre-trial services. The mileage, I just moved it up a little bit mainly. I'm going to the same places, staff's going to the same places, but July it is for the mileage increase as well. The training, I did increase a little bit more. I'm trying to have us go to more training and I have some, and maybe try to have some more clerks go to what we call MoPAC Conference, which we do with judges as well. So not too much on that. The office expense, I kept the same. I do still, I have right in the middle of, I've purchased some new computers. And so I've kind of divided it up in some of these different categories because all of them have either, are like totally out of warranty and out of date, can't be upgraded. And so my, it's a county budget, but the Jeff City people helped me with it. And they've been on me. They're like, "Just stop and get all this done and get them ordered." So finally got them all ordered. But that's why I hadn't have tried to put it up in different categories. And in the office expense, Judge Bacon is wanting some new courtroom chairs. From what I can gather, they are the original chairs that the attorneys sit in. And so he's wanting those. So we are trying to work on finding something that's similar to what he had. So that will be fine in this office expense as well. Because we used to have that furnishing and fixtures because that's technically a county budget item that will be outside of mine like when we built the new building. But we kind of moved that in there just to make a note of that. So I think that's all. Every year I always thankfully do have money remaining. And if one category might go over, we always have money in another category. So I'm always conscious of that. I'm conscious of what we've always had all these years. So that's all.
Any comment or questions?
I don't necessarily know.
I just have one, one comment. So, so training, training's one of those things that is necessary. We want our employees to continue to, to learn things. Things change, rules change, better ways to do things happen. However, I would say this to any, any group that comes in and talks about our budget. We're, we talking today about our commission budget, about training and trying to hold expenses down, things like that. I would just say for all parts of the county, if there's ever any time that we can train online instead of actually, I, I know sometimes it's, it's kind of exciting and fun to go someplace. And because I'm one of those guys that sits on the front row. We just had MAC meeting and I can attest, I sit on the front row when I go to meetings. And, but, and I learned things. I learned a lot. I took notes. He can't read my notes I handed him.
Sorry.
But I, I just want to say that, you know, if we can, and we can accomplish the same thing by, by doing online training instead of, because you guys have got a big department. So when you take several people for training, if there's no way we can do it in Missouri and travel through to Missouri instead of some other state or, because any time we fly, it costs more money and, and things like that. I would just ask everyone, not just you, but everyone, every department to try to minimize. That's, that's one expense that is important, but we can try to always keep it down. And other than that, I, I don't see any, any issue with the budget. So you guys ready to make a motion to approve this budget?
And the only other thing, and I think you may bring this up in communications, is in the, in the future, if you can get this information to us a little sooner, and we did have yours from last week, but there were some modifications that were made to it. We're trying to get to the point where we have, everything that we discuss in these meetings, we put on the website so the general public can see what we're discussing, while we're discussing it. So we're trying to make sure we get every office holder to forward all their information to the county clerk so that can get uploaded in a timely fashion.
And I did apologize for being out Monday, Tuesday than I just had yesterday to try to work on it. And then, because somehow I missed Cindy's email that we were even meeting on Monday. And she wrote last week, you know, "The budget's due." And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" Because the little clear gov thing that Amy gives us to September 1st. So because of that, yesterday actually have now like July 7th, every single year, it's a reminder for Barbie to start recounting the budget. So no end date on that reminder.
Good deal.
Yeah.
All right. Well, and I, I agree. I mean, what Commissioner Jackson's saying is, I've noticed since I've been here, since '20, that when, when I first started here, we, we seemed to not get information until the morning. So I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just saying what he said. I noticed that we had all this information and we didn't have time. But I'm the guy, I'm the old guy that wants to study it the night before. And if it's on a weekend, I want to study the weekend before where I actually know something when I come here. And, and then now we want the public, because we've got these live on YouTube, we want the public to know what we're talking about too, so they can have the same copies that we have. And so again, not picking on any one person, but we are trying to educate people in our county to, to, to do this. So, but otherwise, glad you're here today. Glad you're feeling better. And I, I, I think we're ready to vote on the, give a motion on our budget.
I'll make the motion to approve the Christian County Consolidated Courts Fund 101-110 budget.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. And then we have the law library one real quick, kind of as Judge Johnson talked about Monday. And then Amy's kind of probably said over time, it's one of those weird things that we have a budget, but I don't even know how to explain it always.
It's completely discretionary to the courts.
Yeah. But that way she kind of keeps it tally. We give obviously the bank statements. Amy gets copies of every month as well. So she's always, that's how she knows what's going on in this. So it's just kind of a standard approval.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions on that? I just thought one comment could turn into a question. So with, with Mr. Mark Hamilton here, our new county attorney, we're looking into our commission budget. He's in a, electronic law reference system. So we don't have to buy books. We can have a subscription and he can look everything up online. And we were gonna work with Ms. Tooey, but she's been out. I think she'll be back Monday. And we don't have a, I think she's run out of, what do you call that?
User, user license.
She has only so many licenses.
Yeah, licenses, users. And so, but we're willing, the county, if that would save us money, we would be willing to, to piggyback and pay the difference where we could get him licensed over here. And so that way he and our new legal assistant that we're getting ready to hire would, would be able to do that instead of buying a whole new subscription that surely costs more than just having an extra user. So I don't know whether, if we can't do it with Ms. Tooey, then we might want to do it with you guys. Because I'm sure you have an electronic.
It's just for, have one for each judge. That's how it is. And so we, there's a few books that they buy, but not as much just mainly online.
And I don't think we're probably gonna buy any books. That'll be up to, to Mr. Hamilton, but.
But it might, it might be easier with your county budget to see about adding one or two, or two users really, your assistant or someone with Kristen.
Well, that's our first go. I just want, while you're here, I want to give you a heads up. We might call you if something doesn't work.
Yeah, I'd be great.
All right. All right. I need a motion to approve the law budget.
Yep. I'll make that motion to approve the law budget for 2026.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Very good. Okay, I think our next item is our chief juvenile officer, Mr. Perry.
Good morning.
Good morning. So any other comments, items that you want to talk about?
Well, I think we addressed the rest of the big things. And I know that the commission was gonna take some time with Mr. Hamilton about some of those. Mr. Hamilton and I have talked about that this morning. I was able to share with him the statute that shows that Judge Johnson is appointed authority and the supervisor role with the juvenile office. And I know there were some questions regarding the possibility of our attorney being, having to be supervised by a layperson, obviously, to be Judge Johnson. So I would be, staying corrected, as I indicated last Monday, that I would be supervising the, the legal position in our office, that I would supervise by Judge Johnson, which she technically already is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just more of a technical thing. I've been here, you and the judge work very close together.
Yes.
But you can't have a layperson over the.
I learned something new.
Or a legal person. Interesting enough, while Mr. Jackson and I was at the MAC summer meetings, I was able to talk to 14 commissioners. I was trying to talk to more. I couldn't find anybody. I talked to two other first-class counties. I talked to whoever I could talk to during the time. Well, it seemed like the schedule was pretty tight on meetings. But, but I was just trying to find a county that had, had a person that worked for the state in juvenile. Talk about juvenile, talk about what we're talking about. And that they had gone from state to county. I was just kind of curious whether that'd been done before or not. And I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm just saying I was just trying to find somebody else that had done that. And I didn't find anybody. I, I don't know what the other commissioners think about that, but I don't, I don't have a problem. But I think the reason why I don't have a problem is because that you have a lot of experience. Is it about 12 years?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah. Twenty-seven, actually.
Well, you have a lot of experience.
Started when you're five. Started when you're five.
Yeah. I started in 97 and then I came to Christian County in 2002.
Yeah. And, you know, you have a lot more than we do because between the three of us, we have zero. So, so, and, and what you do. So, so I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm okay with that. The only thing that I still a little concerned about is the fact that we, we increased a little bit on your budget. And then I keep hearing that Ms. Tooey's gonna want to replace her attorney that's now gonna be working with you. And we're gonna replace an attorney over there. And so I just keep watching those things add up.
Absolutely.
And so, but that's not your fault. I'm just saying, when we're trying to figure out how to keep our budget in a reasonable way.
And I want to know, the juvenile office understands that, we're conscious of that. And, you know, I always dread one of these every year. You've got 20 to 25 of them. So yes, you know, I do, do understand, I very appreciative. As a consumer of the county, I appreciate your vigilance on that. I do.
You know, someday, I'm just gonna mention this, I don't want to be on sidetrack, but I was talking to a gentleman over the weekend in Highlandville, Mike Dean, that has the laser training.
Yeah.
So he does use any bullets. And you guys still spend quite a bit of money on ammunition every year. And so does the sheriff's department. And, you know, and I understand you gotta practice. You gotta practice and, and things like that. But I think it'd be kind of neat someday if we could afford to buy some laser weapons and, and we train with laser guns, because they have all kinds. They have the rifles, pistols, everything, revolvers, everything.
I'm not sure you're gonna want to do all this in front of Kane. He's gonna come right, go back to the hospital and order all of it.
Well, no, I'm not saying, well, you gotta comply with this. Come back and tell us about it. But I'm just wanting to see, we might, we might want to do a study on that and see if we could save some money. If we could save some money on the sheriff's department and your department, because ammunition's expensive.
Very.
And so that could be, I'm just looking for ways to save money on our budget.
Absolutely. And then where it costs that again, I understand the county has insurance that allows some of that training to come in. We've always tried to take advantage of that. Sometimes we're forgotten about and nobody tells us about it as it's an opportunity that we, we do anytime we've had the chance to, that we took advantage of.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. And, you know, some of these, these issues, I, I still have a little bit of a heartburn with, and it's nothing personal. I did have a conversation with Ms. Tooey yesterday. She did explain to me that she, what prompted her to pull back the, the attorney and legal assistant position. And that's a different topic for a different day. I won't bring any of that up.
No, pertinent to me.
Yeah, it's not pertinent in this, in this setting, but it, it's something that shows some area of concern. And, and just as a taxpayer in the community and being, you know, a budget officer, looking at everybody's budget and how best to spend money. But she did give every indication that she would be backfilling those positions. So it was kind of pitched to us last week that just a simple transfer of funds from one office to another, we're not incurring, but she will be backfilling those positions. It may not be in this budget cycle, but definitely the next, as soon as she can find somebody. So that there's no, there's no savings. It's actually gonna be an expenditure. I, I, I still, I've never, never seen where an organization has created a brand-new job title, if you will, to allow someone to leave one agency and join another agency still doing the same job so that they can take retirement benefits.
Never denied it wasn't the situation. But that's, that is the situation.
Yeah. And so I, not finding any evidence that anyone else has ever done that. Now, I know there's a lot of people, and we have some in our sheriff's office, that have left state agencies. They've left municipalities. They've come over and worked for a different agency. And that's, that's pretty common. It's, it's the inside of one office where the, the pay changes from one agency to another, where it's actually supposed to be a state agency, right? Juvenile is, is a state.
That's not correct. So throughout the state, there's, there's plenty of just county offices.
I understand that. But in, in Christian County, it's a state agency. We chose to leave juvenile as state.
You have state employees. The, the agency itself is the county's. It's outside of the county. Oscar has to play for seven state employees out there. And that was through legislation. At the time of the split of Tandy County to Christian County, it was, it was given some choices. Legislators at the time took it to, they were state employees and they made sure that they stayed in state. We've been allowed to keep those positions.
Okay. So that's, that's different than what was explained the other day with Judge Johnson. She said that we had, there was a choice given whether to move the agency to a county agency or leave it as a state agency. And we chose to leave it as a state agency. So I, I just can't, I can't, I can't make a decision today based off this budget without a little bit more information. I almost feel like we need to sit down in a room together with all the stakeholders to try to figure this out. What's in the best interest of the organization as a whole? No personalities. I don't, I don't make decisions based off emotions. I look at everything. I look at everything from a 360-degree perspective. And I want to make sure that we're making the best decision for the organization and not the personalities inside the organization. I know that there's, ever since I got here, two and a half years ago, there has been conversation of, you know, this is the only office inside Christian County that, that it's, it's kind of morphed together with state employees and county employees. And it's, that's where I was pushing the other day to need a memorandum of understanding so we know who's responsible for this, who's responsible for this, who answers to who, who's in charge of this, who's in charge of that, what the repercussions are of violating the memorandum. It clarifies everything. And maybe this is an organization that can't have clarity because of the, the two entities working together.
I'd say that it's, everything you said, it may be the one thing I agree with you on. The reality is it was, it was muddied up by people that are not in this room.
Yeah.
Regarding that, there's, there is a statute that I shared with Mr. Hamilton this morning that, in my opinion, it structures everything very clearly what it is. And I'm gonna take the opportunity now, that we've talked about this, go back to last Monday, whenever you insinuated that I was doing something unethical or shady. That's offensive. I've got 27 years of public service, working for juvenile office, and, and I've done it very effectively.
And I'll apologize to you. And I stated in that meeting that I said I felt that it was, not knowing if that's quite the right word to use. But it just seems to me that we're creating or we're utilizing maybe a loophole to, to benefit one person over the organization. And by no means am I trying to insult you. I, I think you've done a great job. You have a great track record of, but it just, it didn't seem quite like the right thing to do, shifting the responsibilities from one agency to, to be able to retire from this agency but keep your job doing the same thing to switch over to another agency, if you will, to receive your, your paycheck and then, and grab benefits, right? And this is nothing from an emotional standpoint or a personality standpoint. I think you're a great guy. I honestly do. And I have not met anybody that wouldn't say the exact same thing. I don't understand how it's in the best interest of the organization, other than it keeps you inside the organization doing your job. But I think if you, if I polled 100 people, they would probably say, "Yeah, it doesn't seem quite right." And maybe it is 100% legit. So I personally, right here on YouTube in front of, you know, how many ever people watch it and everybody that's in the room, I apologize if you took what I said. In no way did I mean to insult you. But I, I'm just not liking what I'm seeing here. And I don't have any other way to, to explain it.
No, I, I would, I would concur. The reality is, it would be, it's personally awesome. I will tell you the steps I took to, to make that decision. Obviously, it's from my family and prayer to start that. Because it was, it was always the idea, I was gonna retire and move on to something else and do. I approached Kane Northka, who would be likely the person who would succeed. And I said, "I'd like to come back and stay with the county if, if possible. But would it make things complicated if I came here and worked as a J O two who stuck a case rule?" He's the first person to say, "You know what? Why would you not stay and leave this place? There's, there's, what would be the difference between the J O two position or the four position? You'll be here. You, you have most knowledge. You have the, you know how to run this thing. We would all benefit from that." We then approached all of our employees. Because again, at any point in time, if somebody said, "No, we don't think that's a good idea. We don't want you here," it would have been over. And as I approached Judge Johnson, that was another person. If I, all I said, "You don't have to give me an excuse." She told me, "This was not a good idea. We wouldn't do this." She, she encouraged me. She thought this was a great idea. So that's, that's where we are. I mean, again, I will take it for granted of the, of the situation. I'm very appreciative of what I've got here, what I've built here. I'm very appreciative and humbled by all the deposit things that have been said about me. I think that I can do that from that county position. And it still is a benefit to the organization, a great benefit to the organization, great benefit to the county. But if you don't feel like that's, that's, that's not in the best interest of the county, then I would do something else.
Yeah, I think, again, I think, I feel like sitting down with, with all the parties involved and trying to figure this out and what is, what is the best. And maybe what you explained is the best. There's still the cloudiness of it being, to me, a state agency. Now it would be run by a county employee. And maybe that, all that can be explained away to me. And I hate tying up legislative time when that could be done during a work-study session. I don't know if the other two commissioners are interested in going to that level of sitting down with yourself and Judge Johnson and, and human resources, the auditor, as the chief budget officer, how, how we make this thing work appropriately so that we're, we're not muddy in the waters even more. And I know juvenile is a, is a unique thing. I know there are places, there's counties in the state where the juvenile officer or the chief juvenile officer is actually the attorney inside that agency. And then you've got two birds, one's. And then you've got two birds on one stone.
I'm not going to law school.
You're not going to go to law school at this time? I don't blame you. I don't blame you. But those are the things that, you know, how do we, how do we set up the organization to make it as clear, crystal clear as possible for everybody, even the laymen that are standing on the outside overseeing the budget, reduce the stress to the budget, make the Human Resource Director life a little bit easier, because she knows what everything is, and that memorandum of understanding is detailed out, and then we move forward and go on down the road. And I would rather see all those pieces, parts put in play before we pass the budget and then go back and try to fix it.
I kind of expressed in the last meeting, kind of the history and what my opinion was from that. I think when you get into law enforcement positions, experience in having somebody there is much different than hiring for other type of positions. I have absolutely no problem with meeting MOU, and really, I think it's more about the details of creating that position, how that's going to fit, without trying to go back and fix it. I have no problem with that whatsoever. We kind of touch on the situation as far as whether or not we think you would fit that position, or how that would be. The really only thing to the county is, there's a little bit more liability behind, you know, with the structure. Outside of that, what we get in return, in my personal opinion, is much more than just what the liability is. And if you go back and look at your history and look at the things, and how much liability we've had, or how much trouble you've gotten into with the state, I think that kind of speaks volumes for what you're doing with your department. So that part of it doesn't worry me. Understanding the structure, obviously, we have to do that, so. I went back and just looked at the numbers to say, okay, by moving you in this position, it's costing the county $2,500 a year, because a lot of the stuff are covered through the bonds and things like that. You can't replace a person with that much experience, that much things, that much leadership, by just putting somebody in a more position. So I feel very strongly that I would love to see you in that position, you know, and speaking with everybody, I have absolutely no problem with sitting down MOUs, making sure, and that's to protect you just as much as it is the county, but I don't, I personally don't see any issue with it whatsoever. We see people that retire and then move on. You're going to retire and go somewhere else, because you're not going to be able to increase benefits. So if we get to make a decision as a county, do we want to keep you here with the amount of experience that you have and do that, or allow you to go somewhere else and hire somebody right now off the street in that position that literally we are not saving anything from? So to me, that part is a no-brainer. Setting down the structure with something completely new with HR, how we're going to structure that, it is very important, because it is something newly created, and so that's kind of my two cents, based on, you know, what we have discussed in the past with all that.
And I would just add that I think the, just like Commissioner Williams says, I think the real bonus, the real bonus here for the county is the amount of experience. I also understand what Commissioner Jackson is saying. I looked at my calendar just now, and you know, as early as Monday or Tuesday, if we wanted to go ahead and art out an MOU, we've got an House County Attorney, we also can still use Mr. Fax.
Is Tuesday the deadline, Amy, that I'll have to?
They just have to present their budget to you by the 18th, you guys don't have to approve it till January 10th.
Okay, so we have some time, we need to meet later next week.
I would say, what we're talking about is probably more complicated.
Yeah, it is, it is, but we could start and reserve it next week and work on.
It may take a couple of meetings.
I think so, yeah.
Us to put our feelings out to you, you to absorb those, bring back.
Yeah, I agree, and encourage, I think that's absolutely fine, that'd be absolutely fine. Obviously, Judge Johnson has to finally say so, we want to speak for her, but I have confidence she will be fine with all that also.
Well, and the other portion of that, talking about the supervision, she's going to be responsible for you regardless of what that is. So it doesn't change the concept of like, now all of a sudden, you're where it's, she's going to be responsible for you, whether it's a state position or whether it's in the county position. And obviously, if she feels comfortable with you being in the position, that's where I come to say the same.
So we have, we have choices. We can approve the agenda as reported with the contingency that we're going to work on an MOU. If we don't get that MOU completed and agreeable on all sides, then we're not going to approve the budget, or we can approve the budget today as stated, and we can still continue to work on the MOU. So it's.
I think, I think we're statutory compliant, according to the auditor, that the budget's been presented to us, let's sit down and let's work out all the details to make sure that we're 100% covered and all the questions are answered, everybody's confidence level is high, and then, you know, we'll get the budget approved, and if that potifies or something changes inside that budget, we'll get those changes made. If it doesn't, then at least we'll have confidence in knowing that we went through all the steps to protect everybody, the state agency, the county agency, the employees therein, so.
And I would just want to make sure you understand, Mr. Perry, as far as I'm concerned, and I can't speak for the others, but I'm pretty sure that we have extreme faith in you, in what you've done in the past and what you're going to do in the future, and I'm hoping, really hoping and praying that we get something worked out to keep a person like you involved in our county. So we're going to work hard to make sure that it's good for the Juvenile Department, good for you, good for the county.
I appreciate that.
Okay, okay. All right, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The next item is the sheriff's office, we've got employee record destruction. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sheriff Cole just wanted to put on the record that we plan on destroying approximately 108 employee records that have now been digitized within the IA process, so we just plan on shredding the hard copies.
You still have copies.
Say it again.
You still have your personnel records in charge, and they digitized everything.
I didn't hear what she said.
We're only, you're sitting on the back row, and speaking very softly.
Well, you, I felt you were looking, we still have copies, they're just destroying the shares.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they digitized them.
Yeah, there's still, there's still records, you just haven't worked out.
Yes, there's. I would make the motion to approve the destruction.
Say it.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you very much. I think that's good work, I think that's what we should be doing in this modern day.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is County Clerk, Miss Paul, we've got certification of the August election that we just had.
Good morning.
Morning.
Lucy, I'm just here to get the certification in the minutes for history. We did have an election last week, we only had two entities that held an election, Ozark Schools and NIXA District One Councilman. There was 31,529 voters eligible to vote, we only had 1,300 show up, so we had a 4.15% turnout, so very disappointing.
Is that like a record low?
I think it is, I think it is, yes.
Now, let me ask you a couple of questions. You may not know the answer to one, you may know the answer to the other, so I'll start with the one that you probably know the answer to. NIXA runs an unopposed seat. Is that in their charter?
They have a charter, yes.
That they're going to run an election no matter what, even if there's no opposition?
I think so.
It's a kind of a costly thing for them to do. So now that goes on to the second question, do you have an estimate of what that election cost the taxpayers?
Right now, I'm still, I'm figuring out my final cost, and right now, I'm at $43,000. And how that it works, each entity pays for how many voters are in their precincts that they have. So it's, you know, Ozark's going to pay a whole lot more than NIXA, because I think NIXA only had, I think NIXA had 5,814 eligible voters in their part, and the rest was Ozark Schools, so Ozark Schools is going to pay.
They'll pay the lion's share of that. And so, let me ask one additional question on that. When we know there's going to be one item on the ballot, is there any way that polling locations could be consolidated, or is?
We did consolidate the NIXA side, because we would have had, I think we'd have had High Point, Summit, and the library. We put all those at NIXA Jenner High to consolidate, because, you know, we did figure it having a large turnout.
Sure.
So we did consolidate those, but the east side, or the east side, we had every voting location.
And as I was looking through the numbers, you know, it seems kind of crazy, you know, that we have 21 people show up, and we had staffing that had to sit there all day long. Now, maybe they cut up on their books, or listening to some music, or, you know, something that.
I know, we called around, I think it was like 11:30, and we called Elm Grove, and they had four voters at 11:30, so it was pretty, a long day.
It was a long day for them, yeah.
But, yeah, but I just want to get that in the minutes.
Ms. Paul, do we, usually, on the bigger elections, I'm always paying attention to not just Christian County, but Green County and Stone, Tanney, you know, Webster, I'm kind of looking around to see what's going on. And they, well, obviously, in the bigger elections, we have more people voting. I'm always disappointed in the number of people that vote, whether, you know, bigger or smaller, but, you know, you all, this, your group did a great job, the clerk's office does a great job, but you're doing the same amount of work with just, for the same, for a very small number of people voting. I just think it's embarrassing that the citizens today don't educate themselves and go out and vote. There was important issues, both in NIXA and Ozark, and it's important to somebody, shouldn't be important to a lot of people, but, and then you have people that complain, oh, that raised taxes, or that did that, or didn't do it, and things like that. I wish we could figure out a way, do we know if our neighboring counties, were they about the same procedures?
I don't think, I don't think Tanney County had a, an August election.
They didn't have one.
And I'm not sure if Stone County had one either, or I don't think, I'm not for sure if they had an election.
Yeah, I think, I think Green did.
They might have.
I think they have the hospitality tax was on the ballot, maybe.
But I know Tanney County didn't have it.
Well, it just seems like there's some, something lacking. Some, it's not just, we can't get people to vote or make people vote, but there's something lacking. There's got to be some group or something that can encourage and get people to go out and vote. I just think it's.
They get free stickers to put on those.
Yeah, well, I think that's.
That should be incentive enough.
Yeah, I think it's, I think those things are important, but I think we need to continue to think about it and figure out how we can get more people to be responsible and take the time and effort to vote.
Quick follow-up question to Brett's, is, with NIXA being a charter, are they allowed to vote on that to where if it wasn't unopposed, it actually doesn't, or is that something that is set by the statute that forces them to do that?
I think it's set by their statute of charter status.
Their charter?
Yeah.
They should be able to go in and modify that.
That's why I was wondering, I could do some follow-up conversations, because it'll help everybody save some money, so.
That term for the person running was only an eight-month term.
And then I think the person that ran actually didn't finish their paperwork, so it wasn't even.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was a big waste.
He was disqualified.
Taxpayer dollar, so I hate that. So I was just wondering if there was a chance, a way around it, so just curious.
Okay, no other comments? I will entertain a motion to approve the certification of the August ballot election.
So, no?
Okay, got a motion?
Say it.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Ms. Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Resource Management Director, Mr. Todd, second quarter report.
Yes, providing you with a copy of this earlier this week. Just trying to make this quick, got a long agenda today to get through. First half of this year has been a nice steady statement beginning of the year for all the departments under our RMD umbrella. Our operational expenditures for all the departments are on pace to allow for more operations without exceeding any of the prospective funding that you've allocated. As far as grant activity goes, we completed the trail surfacing out at the development project, and I believe we received back a $50,000 grant reimbursement on the materials used there. Currently, we're working with CMCOG to obtain a 604B Clean Water Grant through Missouri Department of Natural Resources. That would provide $45,000 for planning to be used in our stormwater management program. Hoping to hear about that in the near future. Last fall, we had submitted a larger grant application called the SWIPER Grant through the EPA. We requested almost $790,000 in funding that would potentially be used for the construction of our planned recycling facility relocation. We found out in June that our application had made it through the first level of review. That's encouraging. There's no local match required for construction here, and hopefully, we'll find out before the end of 2025. It's very competitive. I wouldn't want to place odds on it, but probably less than 50.
So you're saying there's a chance?
I'm saying there's a chance. I haven't said no yet. As far as Planning and Development Department goes, we've begun discussions with both NIXA and Ozark's planning departments on reviewing the urban service area regulations, provided them with kind of report and preliminary thoughts, have not heard back from that yet, but we're continuing to work on our end, on some ideas to make that better. When it comes to trail development, as you're aware, we've been working for two years to acquire some railroad right-of-way, and you all successfully completed that, and that's been passed along to Ozark Greenways, and that would add about 1.44 miles of right-of-way for that trail, which is a big deal, especially seeing how that would be part of the connection that will lead to the overpass that's currently under construction. As far as land use change goes, in the second quarter, processed three resounding requests that were recommended for approval, that involves 67.8 acres in terms of residential It still seems somewhat suppressed, and I think this is probably nationwide, but despite that, during the second quarter, we processed 11 minor subdivision applications that resulted in the creation of 20 new parcels, which are potential residential building sites. And, you know, if we look at that, as far as the first half of the year, that means 45 new parcels were created via that process. Also, currently, we have two new subdivisions in the works, which would add another 18 residential lots. So we continue to create spaces for new homes. In terms of commercial development, of course, we always work with developers on various projects, potential projects. Our lack of water and sewer out in the county does place some limitations on that, but to highlight some projects going on, there's gas station remodel in addition taking place in Spokane, new warehouse building out on Highway 60, I believe the Signal Gas Station on Highway 14 is about done. Work continues on Fiochi's reconstruction of one of their warehouse buildings. They also have plans for another large structure out there, and we'll see, hopefully, that will progress in the coming months. I believe they finished up the remodeling out at Riverdale Baptist, and of course, finishing up the county employee health clinic and operations building. In building inspections, basically monitor the amount of permits issued year by year, and we are ahead of the pace that we had in last year, which is encouraging. I would say that when we look at new residences, we are in part of a downward trend over the last several years. Of course, there are other things that make up the difference, people doing remodels, additions, adding accessory buildings and so forth to their homes, helps keep our guys busy and our permit numbers up. I concluded a chart here that gives some. I concluded a chart here that gives some context. The bright green line represents this year with the backdrop of the previous 10 years or so. You can see we're a little bit above average right now, which is, is good. Out at the recycling center, Lee and Bobby, they just keep showing up for work every day and doing their job. They continue to collect materials from folks that drop off at their site, and we also pick up at remote drop-off locations in Sparta and Billings. In terms of collections, we are ahead of last year's pace, which is good. Actually, our collections of cardboard are at their highest point in quite some time. So things are looking good out there. In the environmental world, our staff has attended multiple MS4 workshop presentations offered by DNR. We've been asked to participate with a group called Ozark's Environmental Collaborative. That's new. We'll see how that develops in the coming months. I know that some organizations are experiencing funding changes that they didn't expect. It has been, the second quarter was extremely rainy. So our staff investigated a number of variety of complaints and situations related to permitting and compliance with our stormwater regulations. In most cases, we're able to work with property owners to get into compliance. In some others, we've had to escalate that to working with the prosecutor's office to get, to get people to comply. We also have a couple of property owners who have developments in the floodplain, working with them to get their goals achieved, but also stay within the limitations of the floodplain ordinance and federal guidelines. Last page, I've just listed various activities and groups that have used our facility, the meeting room over at 1106 West Jackson. Still remains of great value to the county to have a place for people to have a meeting. It also demonstrates the need for finishing up the new building and having a better place for those things to take place. That's really all I have.
Very good, very good. Comments, questions?
No, just thank you.
That's a good report. I appreciate the graphs and charts.
Same one every time, but.
I don't know if you knew that or someone else does that for you, but it makes it easier to understand things. That one, it's, looks so complicated. Looks like my great-grandson did it, but obviously, once I look at it, I can understand.
When I look at that, the years keep piling up.
You see how, how it's going up and down and all these different colors, but.
We'll see if we can come up with something in the back.
Good, good job. All right, good job. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our owner, Ms. Kim. About road and bridge court order process and name change.
Good morning. Did everybody receive a copy of the documentation yet?
Yes.
So as you gentlemen are aware, every month, the county receives cart funds for the roads and sales tax funds for the roads. And the process for distributing that is outlined, the first, if it knows the first six steps, the treasurer did five of them. And auditors, both internal and external, like segregation of duties. So in order to get a little additional oversight and take some of the burden off the treasurer, we have proposed a new process that involves the treasurer, the auditor, the county clerk, the highway administrator, and the commission. And we did kind of a trial run of that this month, and it seemed to go very well. And the second part of this is the name of the document, the Certified Court Order. As near as we can tell, that goes back to the 1940s, when commissions were called courts. And they aren't anymore, so we would like to update that name to a Certified Commission Order, because worst-case scenario, we'd have a new judge come in, see Certified Court Order, and think they needed to be involved in that process. So this just makes it a little more clear who has the statutory authority to make that designation.
Yeah, something should have been though by some time ago, I'm sure, but.
That was 50 years ago.
There's still people out in the community that refer to us as judges, so.
Judges, yeah.
Like, no, that's changed a lot.
I think that sounds.
I think this process looks good.
Yeah, I think that sounds very good, so.
Good job.
Any, any comments, questions?
No, I just appreciate the effort that was put in to try to streamline and make things more efficient and less complicated.
She's part of this process.
Very good. We give kudos to all of you. Need a motion to approve this change?
I would make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. I think that's, that's, that's a good step in the right direction. Okay, next item on the agenda is Purchasing Team Manager, Ms. Kim. I think we've got you on there two or three times, three times.
Say the best phrase, right?
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah. Good morning.
Well, good morning.
The first one we have is, this is for ITV 2023-16. This is a contract renewal. It's for office supplies. We originally received five proposals several years ago. We narrowed them down to the two lowest price, which was Quill and Staples, which is kind of interesting because Staples actually owns Quill. I think I've told you this before, but Quill is the largest online office supply in the country. They don't have any brick and mortar. So I always ask Staples, why didn't you just take them and name of Staples, they go? Because they know what they're doing, and we don't want to touch them, so that's, that's what it is. We looked at their percentages for this year. Staples actually went down 1.3%, and Quill went up 2.3%. Now, I will tell you that we use Quill a lot more than Staples online. We both have them online. Staples, we actually have more for furniture, if we need furniture, but that's, that's really what it is. We have had a dedicated rep, Deb Smith, for the last 15 years. Every time we bid this out and Quill has gotten it, Deb has been, you know, with us. And so I just actually had a meeting with her last week, and we are really even with last year as far as our spending. So I will also tell you that I, you were talking about costs, and that's always near and dear to my heart. But a lot of people are still looking at Amazon and Quill as far as looking at office supplies. But Amazon still is typically a little bit more expensive. And case in point, this last week, I had an order come across my desk that was with Amazon. I went back out and checked Quill, and it was $10 a box cheaper with Quill. So I made me cancel that order and re-put in for Quill. So we are watching things like that. So with all that said, my recommendation is for the contract renewal to Quill and Staples for one additional year.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions?
No.
No, good work. I need a motion to approve.
I just, I will say, I'm glad that you guys are paying attention. Most people just assume Amazon's going to be the cheapest option. Let's just go there and order it, so the due diligence, a double check, so it's good. Sometimes Amazon is cheaper, but.
Sometimes they are.
Not always.
I'll make the motion to approve contract renewal 2023-0016, county wide office.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that's also amazing, Ms. Kim, that, I know most of the county offices are doing more work every year, not less work. And to keep our supply cost, which I really appreciate you guys keeping it under control and watching it, because supplies can get out of hand.
Yes.
And you can waste supplies and things like that, so taxpayers ought to be happy that, and we're certainly happy that you're there and the rest of the staff, so. Okay, next item on the agenda. What you got next?
Yes, so we have several departments that have copier leases that are coming up, correct, for expiration. So we bid out several different types of HP copiers. We sent it out to all of the HP maintenance contract people in this area. We only got one bid back. That was with copied products, which we're happy with. We've used them for quite some time. But this would be, the bid price includes a 60-month lease for copiers with a maintenance contract. The maintenance contracts includes toner and preventive maintenance. And then we also, when you do a copier, and again, you know, but when you do a copier, you are also getting the prints per copy. So how much are you charging us for black and white? How much are you charging us for color? And I will tell you that we're getting ready to change two different offices to have new copiers. And just, just the prints per copy will be half of what they've been paying the last five years. So we're going to save money that way. So anyway, my recommendation is to award to copied products.
Even when I ran my own business, I always hated that, because I hate that they do a 60-month lease too, because you're like, ugh, but everybody does it across the board. It's not like just this company does, so.
All right, very good. Got a, need a motion to approve the copied products?
Make the motion to approve the copied products 2025-9.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, I think.
I do have something for you to sign, but I'll go and wait till the end.
Okay.
So, a week ago, on August 8th, I was approached by our highway administrator, Ms. Beatles, that we had an emergency. And it was for the road damage in Compton, and if you don't mind, I'm going to let you.
Sure. So from the, I've been calling them the Memorial Day storms. We had some damage on Spring Hill Road near the bridge. It's kind of hidden on the north approach there. We had the, it's a concrete pavement approach that we actually replaced in a previous payment disaster. But we had shot rock armoring off the edge of it. That armoring got pushed, which revealed the edge of our road undermining. So once we saw that, I reached out to Ms. Kim, also contacted, well, we had a contractor there working at Spring Hill for an ARPA project, where they're kind of realigning the banks of the Finley. They didn't want to touch it because there's a private fence right there, and they were worried they would get into that. And they were busy with the other projects. So we reached out to J and H, who's the contractor that did our Rochester Road ARPA project. So I want to give a big thank you to him for being able to support, to get that work done. So basically, what we did was we filled back under the concrete with flowable fill, created a footer there, kind of a cap and a footer there, so it won't undermine again. And then he's locked in that shot rock again with some flowable fill. Actually finished the project yesterday. So he started Monday, finished yesterday. He'll be coming back today to just do some finishing, kind of cleaning up work, but otherwise, he's done. So again, just want to thank James from J and H for being able to handle that for us so quickly, because it's not a simple thing of asphalt. It was a concrete approach, which would have been a big deal if that would have collapsed, so.
What was the final dollar figure on that?
Thirty-nine, well, the estimate was 39.5, so I had.
I don't have the invoice yet, but he did say he estimated high, just to be able to take care of it, so fingers crossed.
Yep.
And I did notify Preside Commissioner Morris as soon as I knew. And so, and of course, by statute, it says that we need to let you all know on our first, our next meeting. So that's what I'm doing. So I would like you to approve this.
Yeah, I tell you what, you all did a great job. I was glad to be here and sign off on it and get it done before more damage happens, so. Need a motion just to approve what we already actually done.
Make the motion to approve the 2025-2 for the road damage in Compton, second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Employee Services Director. County Salary Survey Discussion.
So I believe you just wanted me to kind of give an overview of what I have done this year. Every other year, I participate in a salary survey to peer counties and other municipalities across the state. Nobody was doing one this year, so I did one myself. And we did get those numbers back. And part of the reason we do that is we want to maintain fair, decided compensation based on our peers, because we're not, we're not private sector. We can't just Google and say what, you know, an HR director make in Missouri. That's not what we do. So we really do compare apples to apples, and we drill down. We look at the key competencies, not just the titles. So we are really making sure we have the fair peers. So we did that this year. I did that this year. And overall, I found that many of our salary ranges are generally in line with everyone. There are a few that I have identified as being below. And what I will do, because that does create a gap in recruitment and retention, those positions are at a higher risk of, we're losing. And then if we did, when we went to backfill, we'd have a hard time at the rates that they're listed at. So what I do at that point, I think, I think it's important to probably identify the three types of different increases that you can give. You can do the COLA, that's the cost of living. That is just the broad increase that's supposed to help with inflation. What I'm talking about is your market-based adjustments to our matrix. So that's what I was wanting to do, and those are for budget purposes. I don't want to present them to you, because I've not presented them to the individual elected officials yet. I don't think that that's fair. So, but then there's merit increases. And the reason that we design the salary structure the way it is, is, you know, based on this position, this year's a certain, like, I can show you, this is the salary matrix for the different offices and the titles. And you have minimum, Level A, Level B, and a maximum. So what we do is we, when you're budgeting for that, you'll do middle, you know, if it's a brand-new position, you'll do middle of the road, or you'll do a starting, whatever that elected official wants. Then they'll slot their people. Every year, I look at all the people based on where they are, make sure that they're slotted correctly, that nobody's behind. We have had years where we were bringing certain people up. But in this case, I just want to, I'm just going to make a couple of those adjustments on that. Now, if you guys want to do a COLA, I do need to know that, because it will change how it's, how I would make the increases to the salary structure. Does that make sense?
Yeah. When is the deadline for the COLA decision?
September 10.
Okay.
What did she say?
September 10.
September 10.
Oh, but what I was saying about merit increases, that's what I was about, sorry. So when you are slotted, you end up having money. And then when you do your reviews, you have your top performer, and then you can have a decision at that point, see if that is up to the elected official or director, to see if, you know, make sure that their people are, their top performers are making towards the higher end of that. But that is based on their budget. I don't tell them, you know, do that.
Sure.
But we do hold them to their highest performers. It's one of the reasons we do performance reviews. But again, my plan was to do the market-based adjustments just on, and they're, they're not every position. But I need to, I mean, I'll talk with Amy on that, because that's what I enter into ClearGov, but I don't do that until I've told the elected official. And why? Because I have all the data to show them individually why I don't do that.
I mean, I think there's a place for COLAs, you know, definitely to, to keep up with CPI.
Right.
I am a huge fan of merit-based, performance-based raises, because I do think that there are always going to be people that work harder than other people. And, and I don't like the thought of, I think, in my experience. And I don't like the thought of, I think, in my experience, if everybody's making the same wage just based on how long they've been here, you're always going to have people that perform higher, some people that perform lower. When they realize that they're getting paid the same, the incentive to work harder declines, and the production declines with it, and morale declines with that. And so having the ability for all-stars to shine and be rewarded for doing that, and coming in and churning out a good product or a good service, I think is where we should be at. But again, and then to go back, and I think I explained that to you the other day, we had a discussion years ago at the City of Ozark, where it was suggested to give an 8% COLA. And instead, we chose to do a 4% COLA and up to a 4% merit-based raise. And the employees really enjoyed that because there were some that were all-stars, and they received that extra 4%. And there were some that just wanted to go along to get along, and they didn't receive that. And it incentivized them to work a little harder so that next year they could, you know, be part of that merit-based raise process.
Yes. And those are, those are done typically during review time, but they do, we do have these conversations going into the budget to see what they're going to do throughout the year.
Sure.
But, and I am part of that process, but what I am going to mean, like, I thought one of the things, the whole reason that we do the salary survey is to make those market-based adjustments to our matrix. I'm a fan of merit. I also, my job literally to make sure that we're paying people competitive-
Yes.
-within our budget. So that's why I did the salary matrix. But if you do a COLA, which is, you know, that's that broad increase that goes to everyone, I understand that. I mean, I don't, I don't present that portion of it. If you guys want to do that, that would be fine. That'd be really between you and Amy. But I do want to say that I am going to do adjustments to the matrix, and I can provide those to you once they're all adjusted.
So let me ask you a couple of questions. So over the last, I don't remember too much about, I'm sure employees got merit raises because you and the committee do that. But, but, so over the, we'll say the last three years, kind of give me an idea, give us an idea, how many employees, because I agree, I, back in my company, in the 43 years I ran my company, we gave merit increases. We also did COLA. But we, we did merit. I love to give merit increases. Not everybody needs to get paid the same. So how many people, how many people, employees, on an average year, last year, got a merit increase?
That's very close.
Are we talking about, are we talking, I mean, what I'm wondering about, are we talking about a lot of people, or are we talking about a handful of people?
No, well, for, for seven years, I've been, I've been here seven years in October. And when I first came, people paid what they wanted by office. So it took a while to actually make the matrix. The matrix has only been in place since 2023. So increases that people got, a lot was just trying to get them to the correct-
Get to that level.
Get to the right level, because there were people who were behind, and we wanted to make sure. And there were some offices that were ahead, so they might not have gotten, but the COLA, we've done a lot of COLAs in the seven years I've been here as well. That was to get ahead, because we were behind across the board, and those were very helpful to get up to where we needed to be. Merit increases, I would say maybe a fourth of our people are adjusted based on merit.
So about a fourth, well, that's more than I thought.
I mean, you've got 200, I mean-
300, 40 employees?
Oh, I mean, Sheriff has half of his employees, and he looks at that twice a year to make sure that he is recognizing years of service. And when he, he personally looks at, and not everybody does, he just has the most amount of people. I would say his office always, I mean, would you say a fourth?
Yeah. Does he have more?
I mean, I was trying to run through that too, yeah. So yeah, I would say about a fourth or any merit increases.
And when you talk about a merit increase, what kind of percentage are you talking about a merit increase? Is that a 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%? Well, I mean, what's a merit increase?
I don't really, I don't think I could put a number to it. Sometimes, so the way that the matrix is made, like, minimum is your brand-new person with no experience. You know, Level A is about five years of experience. But if you have somebody who's been here two or three years and they're exceptional, you're bumping them to that Level A faster, you know? Your high performers should do that. So-
Maybe three, maybe four.
Because they're built between like 7% and 10%. You're not, you're not going all the way. You start to go middle, so maybe three or four.
Okay. Well, and I'm glad, I am really-
The dollar amount, do you have some type of- A lot of times it's the dollar amount. Like, I'm going to give this person an extra dollar, you know, because they're performing, outperforming. Like, a lot of times it's that. So I don't necessarily do the percentage.
Yeah. And I'm glad we're doing the market-based adjustments, because obviously we've got to keep up. I know the Green County's got these bonuses for their law enforcement and things like that. And I've listened to Nixon the other day saying that it's hurting them, they've lost some deputies, our police officers.
I don't know how they do that, because you can't use tax, taxpayer at all.
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
Can't do that.
The city of Springfield is doing some things right now, pretty aggressive, pretty aggressive, trying to steal other people's employees. But we got to do the market-based adjustment, and I, but do you have any idea how many employees we're talking about for 2026 that will get a market-based adjustment increase? Do you have any idea?
I know how many titles there are, but I don't necessarily mean, if a person, I'm going to make it-
Or how much is it going to cost? Do we have a rough idea of what that is going to cost?
No, because that's not going to be where I have those individual conversations. So for example, if I take legal assistance and I say that it needs to be adjusted to a minimum of, this is really hard to say because then people are going to think that they, let's just say that they're making $10 an hour right now, and they're not. But we're going, I'm going to adjust it to a minimum of 12, because we need, you know, which is not true. Now, everybody who's in that spot may already be making 17, so it's not really going to affect them, but I still have to do the market, do so. So it might not, now it may. It may be people who are, you may have some legal assistants who are making 10, so that means that they're automatically going to be bumped to 12 because they'll be greenlit in the budget as need to be adjusted immediately. Because of, I don't have a number for one though.
But it sounds like you just took $5 an hour away from them, so.
You didn't even get the minimum wage in your discussion.
I, I'm trying to, I don't want to like make people be like, oh, I'm trying to-
See, it's a tough question to answer, especially on the spot.
Well, and I mean, the only reason I'm asking that, I know you're not going to know, I know you're not going to know the number right now, Ms. Amber, but here's the deal. The commission, and I'm just speaking for myself, I believe in the COLA. When I had 330 employees, not all 330 employees got a merit raise, not all 330 employees got a raise every year, okay? That's a big payroll. Now, everyone got a COLA every year. The CPI this year is about 2.46?
2.67.
Huh?
2.67.
2.67.
That was a lie.
2.67. Okay, so I'm going to round that up to 3%. An auditor probably not like that, but-
Not at all.
Not at all, not at all. I'll put that in the minutes. She does not like me rounding up. But, but, I'm old-fashioned. I, here's what I know. Here's what I know. I know that the, the most important asset that this county has is employees. It doesn't, it's not equipment, it's not buildings, it's not anything other than employees.
You never, I mean, you never-
And you know, we all know that. But we all know that, but I'm just stating the fact that that's why, that's why we need to have some more numbers of what we think our projected cost will be before we can actually come up with-
So I'll make the adjustment to the, I mean, what I do is I enter it into Clear Gov. And then I have individual conversations with the elected officials. Every elected official has spreadsheet. Every elected official has, I have every single person listed. I will highlight people who I think need to be bumped. And then I'll, I'll actually put in red the people who are high.
Yeah. See, I, I know this is very complicated. It's not simple. It's very complicated. And we always want, and I know you try to be extremely fair and reasonable and take care of everyone, and you do, you do a very good job. I'm just saying that we're going to be making this decision, and I just want to make sure that every employee is taken care of. And because if we don't take care of our employees, we're not going to be able to take care of our citizens. The services we provide is largely dependent on the quality of employees we have and the attitude they have every day.
Which is why we do the salary survey, to make sure that we are competitive. And I, I like to adjust positions, because I, I do think that when you do an overall, you are just doing a, that we're just keeping up with inflation. What I'm doing is going in to target to make sure that we are actually competitive by title, by position. And I don't want to pay people what, what their job is worth. I don't want them leaving.
Yeah, I know you do.
I would, I would feel that it is a failure if someone leaves here and goes to another municipality for the exact same job because of money. So I really try to make us competitive. Cannot compete with bonuses, but it is something that we do, so that's what I don't want to make people do.
And because of you and others in your department, we have, I know, that in 2020, my very first day, you sat right there where Ms. Maddie was sitting, and I sat right there and I asked you what the number one problem in the county was. And you said that we are great, we are good employees, we're trained employees, and a year later, they're, they're gone for $2 to $3 an hour or more. So that's the number one problem. But we don't have that problem today. So kudos to everybody that we now have a more competitive salary range and benefit range, and, so, so, but we have to keep it up.
We do, that's why we do that.
Because you don't want to go back, backwards. You got to keep going, because we've got people like Green County and other people out there that's trying to offer more, and we don't want to lose our valuable employees. And so that's why everything we've done today is extremely important. But I feel like the salaries and what we can, benefits that we can provide our employees are extremely important.
Well, I'm always going to be the one for that. I mean, I'm just trying to keep us competitive. So, but if you guys do choose to do a COLA, I just, it will, I need to, that affects my numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we need your numbers before we can figure out, I think, our numbers. But we're, we're going to all work together and make-
So if I, if I do my full adjustment with everyone, and then you give a COLA, that's going to be hard. I, I don't-
The COLA is something we need to know first.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, we'll, we'll, the three of us will get that figured out, but you've been the best HR director that we've had. Oh, you're the only one. Oh, sorry about that. But no, I'm truly glad, I'm glad. We don't ever, we're, put that in, no, she's the best that we've ever had. Okay. All right, very good. Okay. We got Mike here?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, there, oh, Mike, come on, come on up here.
I'll be brief, he goes, got a long morning.
That's okay.
Apologize, I have a handout for you that I didn't bring to your office ahead of time. Can I give it to you now?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Is there a place I can sit where you want to get me there?
Maybe, maybe not. No guarantees.
Thank you.
As most of you know, earlier, a couple of years ago, there was a lawsuit that was filed at Leninler that opened up together, backed up for the public. I think most of you are familiar with Canyon Road and the part that's asphalted versus the part that's gravel. I just want to discuss the part that's asphalted. In the handout I gave you, there is a, basically a picture of the legal maps, and I just highlighted the area that we're discussing. On that area right there, excuse me, is four residents that share three driveways. Doesn't occur a lot, but it has been occurring more and more often that those driveways are always blocked by people who are visiting the river. There are no parking signs down there, however, there's no enforcement activity, there's nothing that can be enforced without some type of ordinance passed by the commission that would give the sheriff's office the authority to tow cars that are blocking the driveways of these residents or causing other issues where they can and cannot get out of their driveways. I included some photographs there that will show you the issues. It's not a daily occurrence, it's not a weekend occurrence, but it does occur on a regular basis, or at least this summer. And I feel it's probably only going to get worse as time goes along. There is an ordinance already that addresses the Leninler area. And I remember Commissioner Morris saying we don't need more ordinances, so we already have one. I feel it just needs to be updated and maybe add some additional wording to it that would give the sheriff's office the authority to go down there and tow vehicles. And that's also going to come with a small cost. There's going to be some signage that needs to be placed, something more to the nature of, you know, no parking, vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense. And maybe even if the ordinance number was placed on the bottom of the signs, something to that nature. The folks that live on that road right now are back being extremely frustrated. They're having to put their own barricades up to try to keep people from parking, blocking them in their driveway or out of their driveway. People are basically pulling in, moving those barricades, parking there anyway. An homeowner will come out and address it. They will be met with verbal threats of physical violence. I'll park here if I want to, don't tell me what to do. It's, it's an issue that, at this point, I don't see going to get any better. As a landowner farther down the road, I've checked on my property, I come back out, I can't get out. We're blocked in. Personal experience, a young man pulled his car right in front of me. I said, hey, we need to get out. And he said, that's too bad. So I explained to him, my old farm pickup, there's a lot tore up, and I don't mind tearing it up more. And we have to push his car out of the way. And I think he looked at my truck and said, okay, I'll move. But as far as I know, as soon as I got out, he probably parked right back there again. An ordinance that would be passed by the commission, that would say no parking with these signs, would allow the sheriff's office to go down there, if they're violating the signs, make it immediately tow the vehicle. You do that several weekends in a row, that word's going to get out, and they're not going to have that issue anymore. Speaking from law enforcement experience, there are other issues that you can do, or other ways it can be done. There is a thing called FELTO, a traffic control device. So there are parking signs down there, but you have to actually see the person park the car, and you have to tell them before you, you know, you can tow it. If you have a signage with an ordinance backing it that says unauthorized vehicles will be towed, or no parking vehicles tow at owner's expense, that gives the sheriff's office the authority to rent in there to it. With the county attorney, I don't know if you can add a criminal or civil penalty to it, as in like a traffic ticket, or something to that nature that would make them have to pay a fine. That would probably negate your eventual cost of signage that has to be put up. I don't know if there is a, any type of understanding agreement with local tow companies that the sheriff's office may have, or the Common One Center may have. I know when we tow cars, we had a list of tow companies that we would regularly use. Something like that could be brought up. I'm sure tow companies would love the business of removing vehicles and getting paid, you know, not to have to tow wrecked cars, but just tow cars that are parked and just get them out of there. So that was basically everything that I wanted to bring to the commission today, and just ask if you could look at that. Like I said, there's already a, somewhat of an ordinance addressing Canyon Road, that could just be added to that ordinance as well. Any questions I can answer?
Yeah. Mike, I appreciate you being here today. And is it, and we'll see what comments and questions we have. This picture here is pretty- This picture here is pretty, pretty telling what, what the issue is. So I'm assuming that your property is way back here.
My property is nowhere near any of this. It's farther down the gravel portion and it's.
But if you can't get through here, you can't get to your car.
Correct.
One way or the other. This is blocked all the way across.
And that's, my biggest concern would be the actual homeowners that are on the paved portion of Canyon Road. Their driveways are being blocked where they cannot get in or out.
And is there signs on that?
There are limited signs, but they just say no parking. And actually, if there's one, I think there's, I may have not been able to get that particular picture, but there's one where we have two vehicles parked right in front of the sign that says no parking.
Is this mostly on weekends?
The majority of the time, yes.
Or holidays?
Yes. There's, if you, there's a picture of a red SUV that's parked behind us, pickup with like a work type camper. I'm not, I believe it's the third photograph that you have. That is actually taken in the driveway of one of the residents there.
I mean, we don't have any idea whether they're Christian County residents or.
I bet you brought that up. When I go down to the river periodically, I ask everybody, where are you from?
Yeah.
And 95% of the people that will answer my question are not from Christian County.
See, that's what I'm thinking that's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 100% of the intoxicated people, vaping is now a huge thing down there with marijuana usage. Those that will answer my question, not a single person that's towed there from Christian County.
Hmm, okay. That's probably another reason why they don't care whether they want the signs. But I think, you know, we've got our county engineer here named Miranda. And we were just visiting with her before the, our commission meeting started today. And I, I, I agree with you. I think, I think we can improve the situation somewhat by, by changing the signage. We, we make our own signs now. We don't have to buy signs. So that saves time. It also saves money because we can make a sign cheaper than we used to have to buy. And we can put an ordinance on there. We could change the ordinance. We've got our county attorney here. You know, that ordinance that you're talking about was 1996.
Yes, it is.
And so 1996 is the old ordinance. And back then, our good commissioner, Joe Nelson, was in charge. He was the residing commissioner back then. And I think Mr. Kudimalka and, and.
Barnett.
Bill Barnett, Mr. Barnett. And so, you know, I, I definitely think we need to do something about it. What kind of comments, questions you guys have?
Well, I just had a couple here by that in your printer here. And if you were paying attention earlier in the meeting, you might want to look at Quill versus. Just, just a. No, I think that, I think that we probably need to sit down and have a conversation about this. I would like to be able to utilize the expertise of the highway department to talk about the road. And I think the legal opinion that came from Mr. Housley at some point in time with regards to this, having the sheriff there as well. I know that the sheriff's not going to want to be a meter maid for this area, but somehow we've got to control the environment that's down there. Because if, if we're disenfranchising property owners from being able to get in and out of their driveway or emergency vehicles or, you know, I started to laugh when you were explaining your, your issue leaving. It reminded me of fried green tomatoes. When the young girls pulled into the parking lot and they said that they were, they were younger and more energetic or something. Jessica Bates said that she was older and had better insurance. That's what I was thinking about, you know, you and the older, wiser and have more insurance. But yeah, we don't want it to get to that point and it shouldn't get to that point. And, and you know, we're a, we're a country founded on laws. And we just need to, to have the right law in place and enforce that law. And I know that my experience in the city of Ozark and parking around this square, we, on the books, we have a two-hour ordinance that's not enforced. Why is it not enforced? Because law enforcement would rather be out taking care of emergency services than being a meter maid on the square. So I don't want to have ordinances in place that don't get enforced. They make no sense. And if we're going to put something in place, then we need to make sure we have all the enforcement protocols set so that we take care of our citizens. And I, I know there's a lot of people that come down there. And it doesn't necessarily matter where they're from, if they're from Christian County or from Green County, Stone, Tany, out of state, whatever. They're, they're, they're causing a problem and violating, you know, a law. We, we have a law, I sent some of the, Ms. Beetles about it earlier, about, you know, impeding the flow of traffic, parking on the side of the roadway is impeding the flow of traffic. So we already have that. But what can we do to make it even stronger and then enforceable? And then once it's enforceable, actually reinforce it. You're right. You go down there and you tow 30 vehicles on a Saturday afternoon and those guys probably won't ever do that again. You know, and the word will get out over the course of.
We don't have anything in place currently that would allow.
Yes.
The sheriff's office the authority to do that.
We've got to put teeth into something.
We, we do have something. So I want to, I want to just point out, there is a statute, 300, 440, I think. You cannot block the roadway, you can't block the side of the roadway, you can't park in front of the driveway, you can't park in the sidewalk. There's 30 things you can't do. The sheriff can enforce that statute. He can also enforce there are no parking signs. You don't have, I'm not saying, an order would be teeth, but something exists now. It's just whether, I, I think you need to look at the, go back to the root of the problem, which is we've got people parking in places they shouldn't be parking. We have a statute and a posted regulatory sign by the county. We need to find out why or why not that's not being enforced right now. Because like you said, we can add 75 different things on top of that. But if enforcement's the issue, we need to make sure. And I don't know if it's staffing or what, but that's for maybe someone from the sheriff's department.
And I think it could traditionally be some of that staffing. I know there was a newspaper article that was written 15 years ago that was talking about some traffic issues in the county. And they're, they're explaining, in this news article, they're explaining about, you know, time to be called out to this, this issue, whatever it was. I can't remember what it was. It may have been a shoplifting in a, in a county store or speeding or whatever. But it was a Tuesday afternoon at 3 o'clock and there was one patrolman on duty. Well, that's not what you want. Your patrolman on duty is down there dealing with something like this. And that's the same way with the, the square here and enforcement of the two-hour parking. If there's an alternative, I mean, maybe it's reserve deputies going down there periodically to, to check on that, then, then there, we can take care of that. We, we, in the city of Ozark and the square, we don't have any kind of reserve officers. But I know the sheriff does. So there, there maybe is an option. But I know that there's frequently, and we're much better now than we were 15 years ago. There's more patrolmen out there, but there's still not an overabundance of patrolmen on the street at any given time in the county.
Can I address for you?
Absolutely.
And that statistic that, or I still know that you're quoting, coming from a prior law enforcement standpoint, when we enforced it as a highway patrol, we had to have an individual. We needed to see somebody that was with that vehicle to actually order them to move it, write them a summons, et cetera. Otherwise, you would have to sticker that vehicle and it would be a 24-hour period inside an urbanized area, a 48-hour period outside of an urbanized area before you could tow the vehicle.
Take action.
Correct. So if a statute or an ordinance was passed of where you violate that sign, the sheriff's office has the authority to tow you right now. That's kind of what I'm trying to get passed here or get moved forward with. Because once that vehicle's moved and you come back and it's, your car's gone, first of all, you got to make it to the sheriff's office and they're going to say, yeah, we told him because you parked it right in Canyon Road or you blocked a driveway or you're. But more important that you violated our signage that's down there that says that. And when that person comes to retrieve their vehicle, they can be issued a citation at that point if we wanted to look at a civil or a criminal penalty. But I think just the mere fact that your vehicle's towed and now you're going to pay a tow bill, that in itself would be a learning lesson that, hey, I probably shouldn't do that again. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of ways that they can be ventured forward. The second time you get towed or, you know, you pay this penalty, we don't need to get into.
Yeah, and that's, that's a lot for someone to come up with, you know. Simplistic enforcement, I think.
But just to give the sheriff's office the, because the patrol cannot tow off the county roads without an accident or if it's actually blocking traffic itself. Getting a trooper down there is kind of like what you're talking about, you know, coming from that aspect. I had three guys on to cover the whole county. And sometimes it was two or three counties at a time. I know Christian County has a six-man zone. I believe they're supposed to get a couple more guys, so that might help out. But, you know, law enforcement's always busy. But if the landowner or the property owner, that his driveway or her driveway is blocked, you come out and say, you know what, they blocked my driveway. They call 911, sheriff's office come down, yep, this blocked, bring a tow truck in and tow it out, we're gone. Unfortunately, the spot will probably be filled in the next 15 minutes by another car. But just something that we can give the sheriff's office some teeth, sure they have the authority to go down there and start towing parties.
And I think it would be good to schedule a, a meeting where we can put, you know, giving our county counselor some opportunity to do some research as he's new to Missouri, but then also relying on some historical data from Austin facts and, and, you know, bringing the sheriff.
I'll take you for a trip.
Bringing, bringing the sheriff. So that he can, he can, because I know he's going to have, I, I can only assume he's going to have some opinion with regards to monitoring parked cars. But if, if we do pass an ordinance that falls within his obligation to enforce all the ordinances that are, that are put in place. So I think we can work something out to.
Unfortunately, it's not year-round, it's not every day.
Sure.
But there, like I said, there's something that the landowners and the property owners and the residents there can say, you know, this is ridiculous. This has to be taken care of, sheriff's office can come out and take care of it.
If, if one of those homeowners was moving something and trying to pull the trailer, there's no getting out of one of these properties the way these cars are parked, you know, pulling a trailer.
And on that aspect, we can't haul hay. There's no way to haul hay during those times.
And you know what, Mike? Thank goodness, thank goodness, I guess nobody's had an emergency. I can't imagine how an ambulance would get through there if someone in one of those homes or even down further at the river. I, I don't understand how an ambulance would be able to save somebody's life.
It won't.
So, so that's a problem. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Jackson. I, we have no problem having a work-study session and get, get the responsible parties around the table and, and come up with, try to come up with some solutions. And, you know, we, we can do that, we can do that soon. And the only hard part is trying to get everybody scheduled to be at the same time, to get the sheriff there, to get the road engineer, to get our attorney. Pretty much us and the attorney, we're, we're pretty much here. But to get everybody that needs to be here, it will take a little bit of effort, but we can do it. We, we certainly can do it and we want to do it. We want to do it. I'm glad you came and I didn't realize it was that bad. And, and maybe I was told that, but I didn't realize that. I'm probably going to try to drive some hot weekend, maybe this weekend. I might, you might see my white Jeep out there kind of looking around. I, I like to do that. I'm sure the other commissioners will, will check it out too.
Go early or you'll be stuck at the end of the road.
Yeah, I don't want to get stuck and, and.
I got good insurance, I can get out.
I have, I have ways to get you out through fear.
All right, Mike, thank you very much. But we will certainly contact you. We'll get a work-study session together, hopefully before the end of this month. We've got two weeks left. We'll, we'll try to, we'll try to have another meeting, give everybody time to study it and, and stuff like that. Okay? Thank, thank you very much. I believe the last item on the agenda before communications is our commission budget discussion. I just wanted to, and kind of leave you guys with something to be thinking about. I'm going to kind of go over some stuff that we do. I think that Ms. Carey has sent you guys a copy of last year's budget and proposed some of the budget for this year and actually goes back another year or something like that. So you get some historical data. I want to make sure this year, more so than we've ever had before in the time I've been here in my five years, is to make sure that everybody, so our new county attorney, our commissioners, everybody has a piece of this budget that, that we can all contribute to and, and work together on. So just some of the items, we'll do it quickly and then we can, we can, we can be done before. Is that, just think about that. I've already told some of you all that, but I'm just, these are things I've written down over the last few days that I know that we need. I know when we talk about, we have a brand-new position, county attorney, and we, we, we know that we're going to get some type of electronic legal library for reference material. And so we'll work over that with Ms. Toomey or whatever we can do. And you've already been making contact with her, so we, we know that. We know that we have a lousy chair. We don't have any newer chairs that I know of unless Richard can help you to. He's got a pretty pitiful chair. And I, I, I want employees to have, you know, have to have a Cadillac chair. They just need a good.
Self-massage in your micro.
And so.
Something that doesn't bother them out.
And we, and we also, we also talked about continuing education because you're going to be one that needs continuing education. But you think you can do all yours online? You'll just need to give us some kind of idea on, these are amounts. You guys, the three of you, need to give me some type of amount that we're going to be able to put into this budget. But how much continuing education will cost online for 2026? So those are things. And when we talk about hiring, because I think we're sooner now going to be hiring someone to be our legal assistant slash administrative assistant, hopefully we will have expenses. But Mark and I talked yesterday about where we think that person can be. And, but we'll work with IT and see if we, we will need a computer and probably a couple monitors and whatever else that person's going to need. And so there's some expense there probably. So we're going to be trying to get those numbers as good as we can to have a good budget to give to the auditor. But the, I do know that Danny Gray, the assessor, told me to put $35,000 on our, on our budget, commission budget. And that's our part of the aerial maps that they take. 911 also gets charged. The assessor's office pays the most and then the commission pays the second most and then 911 pays a portion. So is that, is that wrong?
No, it does not come out of the commission budget. It comes out of county operations budget.
Oh, county operations, okay. Well, Danny told me to be sure and put it in my budget, so, but he didn't know that. So that's fine. That's actually good. So that goes out of county operations. Okay, thank you. All right. And we, Ms. Kim is going to be having, maybe, maybe next week, you're going to maybe have some bids in for a county car vehicle, a mid-sized SUV. We have not had a, a, a county vehicle for the commission and other elected officials this year. We sold three or four last year of our car and other cars. They try to come up with enough money to, to, to buy a vehicle. And I think it's time to have one. We go to meetings and not everybody wants to use their own personal car. And so we'll see what those bids come in. Maybe we can have, you think we might have them by next Thursday?
We'll have them. They're due on Tuesday at 10:00. So since I, I've already gotten one bid back, so since I get them all back, I'll send them to all.
So if we, we might put that on the agenda, not even knowing if we get them in. Deadline's Monday at noon. And if we can put, go ahead and put it in, if we don't have the bids, then we can take that back off the agenda. But I, I would like to go ahead and, and keep moving on that, that car. And then some of the commissioners were talking about a, a truck for 2026. I don't think you want like a F-150 Platinum or anything like that, do you?
I was thinking High Country, but whatever. No, just, just looking at something that's a little bit more substantial. If we're going out to meet the highway department somewhere to check on the road or a concerned citizen going, you know, gravel roads and, and stuff. Plus it also gives a little bit more.
if somebody needs to move something, they may be able to utilize that truck to move equipment or whatever out to a road bar or...
The one thing we haven't talked about is, we're talking about a new vehicle for the commission, and again, you haven't had a vehicle, reliable vehicle in years.
Yeah.
And that's where one, all the elected officials, to their training, they always say their own vehicles, which is just crazy. But what we haven't talked about is if you did want a second vehicle for whatever reason, a truck. There is also with the state of Missouri, they have a used contract, but it doesn't have the 12 dealers as the new, it's four dealerships in the state of Missouri. So we could always go, if you're interested, we could always go down that path. If there is a truck or another vehicle that you wouldn't care if it's been used, however many years you could put on there, we could always fit something like that out, too.
Yeah, that could be a possibility. I know, not having a, my only concern is I don't like buying other people's problems. And sometimes where the used vehicle, that's what you get. We don't have in-house service department that's keeping up on preventative maintenance. And so if we did have somebody in-house that was constantly checking, you know, the vehicle for whatever, regular preventative maintenance, all changes, all of those things internally versus having to take it somewhere, I'd be more comfortable with the used vehicle.
Well, we do have contracts that the sheriff has right now that the county can use from Midgem and all those other ones. So we do, we do have contracts that we can keep updated, but not, and I haven't looked into the use, so I don't know if they would even offer us a maintenance contract. They might, depending on how old the vehicle is.
Yeah, something we could look into.
Uh-huh.
I'd even thought possibly about if a department within side the county now has a something with 30,000 or 40,000 miles, but then giving them the new truck and us using something.
See, I've looked at all the vehicles.
If there is something, I nearly talked about it.
And I didn't see anything.
Okay.
I mean, I literally looked last week and I did not see anything.
Okay. Thanks for checking on that.
Yeah, I did. Unless Miranda knows it's something, but I, I just don't, do you?
With just like 30,000 or 40,000 on them?
For trucks? Okay. Well, I didn't see that. So there we go.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, that's something I thought about, too. So Ms. Miranda, we'll work, we'll check with you, too, before we do anything, because this is for '26.
For Plow Nix.
But you could probably use, that way you could buy a new, you could buy a new.
Plus his cards that'll lend you here. If you trust him to plow stones, it's up to you.
No, that's a good thing. Anything that we could get that would serve our purpose and at the same time save, save money on our budget is something I think would be good. So I think we can explore all those, all those options. And just for everyone to know, the mid-sized SUV is not just used by the commissioners, it's used by several of the female and male elected officials when they go to meetings. We don't all go to the same meetings. And so, so they may not be driving a truck to the MAC meeting, but they could, you guys could, but they, they may not be. And, but that's why we're getting, looking at two, two different sizes of cars, types of cars. Okay. And something else we have to think about for the commission, Shelby Christian County has met with myself and the Ozark city manager, NIXA city manager. They're wanting us to, the three of us, to increase our giving this year from $50,000 to $60,000, $10,000 increase. I said the same thing that Jimmy Lyles said at NIXA. The Ozark, Eric, the city manager at Ozark, said that they can, they can do the $10,000 increase. So that's good for them. Jimmy and I both said, we're going to have to take care, or make sure that our employees are taken care of first before, especially NIXA said that they were way behind. I think we're more fortunate on the county level of taking care of employees than maybe NIXA is. And so they made an agreement over there at NIXA that not to add anything, any new item to the budget until they've taken care, brought their employees up to where they want them to be for 2026. And I echoed that, though, saying that I could not say today without the commission and everyone involved that we would do that because I'm really concerned about what we spent this year and what we can do for our employees for next year. So, but that's something we'll have to decide. We need to be able to tell them, when we get our budget done, they're going to be wanting to know what, what we're, what we're going to be doing. Chamber, if, if you guys, so if you can check, let's say Ozark and Sparta, and if you'll check NIXA and Clever, we need to get, I'm not recommending to, to really raise our levels or pay more than what we've been paying if we can keep from it. But I do think it's important for us to belong. We go to meetings and so we have other office holders that also go to meetings besides, besides the commissioners. So I, I think that's an expense we need to keep. However, we don't want to, because they're trying to always raise the levels in giving. And, and so we've got to try to figure out how to stay a member and be a participant and, and still not pay more than we have to. We went over this year on meetings and, and travel and things like that. So we'll work on, we actually have three commissioners that will go to meetings and represent our county and learn. But they're all in Missouri. We don't go outside the state, and we do as many things as we can online or Zoom. But we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at that expense. So travel mileage, those kind of things, we'll need to, to relook. Just anything else, I mean, as you look through what we've sent out to you, if you'll just either email to me or email to Mark, we will start putting those things together and then Ms. Carey and I will, will put those into our '26 budget. We'll, I'd like to have a commission meeting next Tuesday at 9 a.m. and 9 a.m. next Thursday, a regular date. I know that's payroll for you. And if you can't, if you or Kelsey can't come here and help us, we'll get someone else. I mean, I appreciate you, what you do, but we will find someone to, to take our minutes and, and things like that. We'll be voting on our commission budget, and this will give other people opportunities to, to do anything. Any other comments or questions on the budget, commission budget?
On the budget.
Okay.
I've been working on the legal department budget. One thing that I've looked at that normally is included in your legal department would be outside counsel. So I need to know maybe from Amy or however we keep track of that, what we have been spending for outside counsel, say, in the last three years. That'll give me an idea, maybe of areas where we can hopefully reduce, you know, and do some things with it. So, you know, eventually that'll be part of my responsibility to manage them. Hopefully as soon as the bar says I'm okay. So then I can manage those attorneys and the work that they're doing, hopefully reduce our, our expenditures that way. So...
No, that's important. That's a good point. One of the things I think that Ms. Amber and, and Ms. Amy is, we're probably going to have some type of agreement with Austin Facts and the company for some type of continuation of coverage for, I don't know if we do it all '26 or...
It will probably drop to an hourly rate instead of blanket.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we'll have some kind of agreement with him if we need him on something to continue, something that we've already been involved in, that you weren't started of. And, and anything else, it'll just help us for a while. But we'll, we'll have to figure out what our estimate would be on that. Hopefully it won't, I don't think it's going to be a lot, but, but it'll always be nice to have a backup.
It appears from everything that I've been reading that outside counsel is the legal department's highest expense. So managing that is probably a really good idea. And you can do it hourly. There's also set fees. There's all kinds of ways to look at it. So we'll talk about, we'll talk about how we should, how we should do that.
Yeah. I think, I think we're going to see our expenses go down. I mean, right now, you've got all these different elected officials in every office, and they, they can call Austin Facts anytime and we don't know it, the auditor doesn't know it, the treasurer, nobody knows it. They're just calling and taking care of business. But you see how many, how many hits they're getting and how, and that costs us money.
Austin's going to include me on all that, so I'm starting to see that.
Yeah. But see, I think we're going to minimize, I think we're going to, we're going to cut that back because, because then they're not going to be, they're not going to be calling him, they're going to be calling you. And if there's something that you can't take care of, then we've got him, Austin, at an hourly rate. But, but more and more, you're going to take care of everything. And, and so I think we should save money in '26 compared to '25, I think. So, but anyway, we've got to do that. The one last thing I want to talk about, and we're, we're just done, I think, we need to think about when we're going to try to get together, give me some input on what we want to do with Juvenal's budget and who we want to get. And I will start trying to organize a meeting in, in the next couple of weeks if we can. If we're all pretty flexible, the hard part will begin, the judge and different people like that at a certain time. It'll probably be early in the morning, probably like an 8 o'clock meeting to accommodate the judge. I think that's okay with all this.
I would assume if you, if you just pick a couple of days, the Tuesday over the next couple of weeks, let them choose. We can be here, I can be here.
Okay.
I don't want to put, I don't want to put it off any. I know we're supposed to have in, in bringing this to communications, we're supposed to be tackling the accessory dwelling unit conditional use permit, and that's been...
Another topic.
Kind of got...
It's on the, well, I think Mr. Todd said we're going to put that on next Thursday's, but, uh, next Thursday's agenda.
Okay. We were supposed to have a work-study session so we could hash it all out before we bring it in here to a legislative meeting. But if we want to, if we want to debate, if we want to debate it in the legislative session, we can, just everybody back your lunch, because it's going to take a while.
Okay. Well, I can, I can, I can communicate that to Mr. Todd and see. I think actually Mike White and a few of the Plains Zone board members is going to be here, too. So I think we're, so we're actually probably going to accomplish it no matter which way we do it.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just like using...
Do you want to set it for a work-study after the commission meeting? Is that be better?
We could do a work-study Tuesday after the commission meeting.
You just got to get with the people you want to see if they can meet here. I mean, I think a work-study session is going to be a lot better for that.
Absolutely. And that's why I should request you to work-study session, so it's a less formal setup, not taking up legislative time. People that are in the room here for this legislative process, maybe they don't want to be part of that. They don't have to show up, you know? So they're back to doing their normal jobs and not being tied up in this room during that process. So...
All right. Well, then, why don't we do this? We'll plan on the commission meeting on Tuesday at 9 a.m. and we'll have a work-study session at 10 a.m. And I'll notify Todd and we'll get everybody notified. But we all know it now, 10 o'clock on Tuesday for the work-study session. And then if we, then we get that hashed out, then we can actually put that on the agenda for Thursday for a vote, if we got, if we got it worked out. Any other communication? We're at communications. Anything else that we need to communicate? All right.
We've got to go to the chamber meeting.
Seeing none. We are here.